All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to study session. We've got a lot going on today. And I'm going to have to leave around noon. And Councilmember Mum, who's Council President Pro Tem is going to take over at that point. So if you stop seeing my picture, Councilmember Mum, you're in charge. Thanks, everyone. And I think we're going to start off with Maran Murphy continuing her presentations on the Housing Action Plan.
Great, thank you all. Load up here. All right. Let's see. You all see me? And see my screen?
Uh, let's see.
I don't know what happens to my visuals on you all.
We don't.
We cannot see your screen.
Cannot, oh, sorry. I started my presentation, but I didn't share my screen.
Okay. Yep.
I was like, where did everyone go?
Yep.
Okay.
We can see it now.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. All right, yes, good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. I'm Maran Murphy of San Francisco City. We are working on our Housing Action Plan that will help increase housing options and support housing needs for more people and families of all incomes. We are building on discussions that we started last week on the draft priorities and potential strategies. We have a few more scheduled out this month, potentially into March, depending on how much we need. And then we'll also be coming back in the spring with a draft plan for your full consideration. I also just wanted to acknowledge that we do have a few other staff here on our, some of our partner departments that we've been working with in case any program-specific questions come up. So just wanted to bring up the Housing Goals and the Comprehensive Plan again, because a lot of what we're talking about has a lot of relation to the Housing Chapter, much so that it did last week. The Housing Vision and the Comprehensive Plan calls for affordable housing of all types that is safe, clean, and healthy. And we do have two goals, one on having choice and diversity, and then one on housing quality and preservation. So I threw these up. These are some example policies from the Housing Chapter. I'm not going to go over them, but I did just want to point out that many of the housing policies do speak to affordable housing and to providing opportunities for housing that supports all incomes. So the policies that are in the Housing Chapter, the Housing Action Plan can really help further meet those policies and hopefully help encourage both the development as well as the preservation of affordable housing. And as I shared, we're going to talk more about draft policies and strategies, draft priorities and strategies, apologize. And I shared this last week on our draft organization, a lot of drafts, I know, but we are in a draft stage right now. But just to kind of reiterate that the organization that we're talking about will have priorities and strategies. And then each strategy will have a narrative and then suggested actions. And we're talking at a very high level today about the priorities and strategies. And then we'll be working on building more context when we do the draft plan. But for today's purposes, we're just going to talk at that high level and kind of get some feedback there. So here's the list of draft priorities. Again, last week, we talked about the first one. This week, we're going to narrow in on the second one, preserve and increase housing affordability and quality. Each one of these has some overlap, so it's not totally exclusive. But we're hoping to narrow down into more talks on affordability today. And again, these were identified through review of previous initiatives, our housing needs and data, and then feedback through community engagement. So to start with the housing, I guess I should say, the second priority is preserve and increase housing affordability and quality. And to start, I just wanted to frame housing affordability. So the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, considers housing to be affordable if the household is spending no more than 30% of its income on housing costs. And throughout this conversation, we've been also considering the combined cost of housing, transportation, energy, maintenance costs, and other costs that feed into household affordability. And a lot of these really determine how affordable housing truly is. So just wanted to kind of make that point.
Can I ask a question on the first goal?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess I'm wondering, when it says expand housing options to create more homes for more people, how does the OHS stack up in terms of how many people per unit? Because in the Northwest District, there seems to be a lot of single folks in homes, in fact, a lot of single women. And so I'm just wondering if we are like the rest of the nation, or do we have a little bit of a unique circumstance where we have maybe more or less, I don't know, you know, numbers of people per unit?
It's a great question. I don't have that data right with me. I know Chris Green is on, I think you were looking at something like that. Do you have a number there, or we could get back to you, Councilmember Mum?
I just think it's important to. It's important to understand this before, because, you know, this concept, well, let's just make more houses. Well, we have to understand who is going to be in them. Are they families of five, or is it a single person? And so if we're the same as the nation, great. But if we're different, we may need to have a different conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have been looking at changes in household size. I don't have that exact ratio that you're talking about, but that is something we'll definitely include. Okay, so the other term I just wanted to bring up is the area median income. And so this is an important way in addressing household incomes. And the area median income refers to the median income of all family households in a metro region or county. And it is, a family size and cost vary by region. So HUD produces a median income benchmark for each area on an annual basis. And so we're not going to get too much into it, but I just wanted to reference this as a really common way that we talk about analyzing housing needs and trying to identify needs that might meet particular incomes, knowing that different needs, different housing needs might have different strategies. So for example, the 2020 income and rent limits for a low-income family of four, which is at the 80% AMI level, is about $61,000. And then for a very low-income family of four, about 50% AMI, that drops to $38,000. So there is a difference, and that really does impact, you know, what people can afford, and then what strategies we might need to reach each one. So through our data analysis, we know that in 2018, close to two in five households in the city still can spend more than 30% of their income on housing, which is referred to as cost burden. So this is just one point that speaks to the growing housing affordability challenges in the city. I showed this before, but I just wanted to reference that. When we did our survey, the number one challenge that was referenced overall was finding a home I can afford. And this is particularly high-rated among renters, lower-income household families, and those looking to buy. So definitely speaking to challenges even entering into the housing market. And then I know I've said this a lot before as well, but I wanted to kind of draw attention to the bottom part here. And this is starting to speak to different housing needs have different strategies. And so at the lower AMI levels, there is more of a high need for public subsidies, funding programs, and partnerships to help maintain that affordability. And then at a higher, medium to higher AMI, there's more of a market role with homeownership as well as market rentals. So incentives and other policies can certainly help reduce barriers and challenges and encourage affordable housing even in that AMI level.
Hey, Maran.
Yes.
I just, for me, I think it's important to point out, too, that the entire system, I think, affects affordability for the folks on the lowest end. And if you don't have enough stock for all those different income levels, then it's going to create a compression effect, and it'll affect the folks at the bottom just as much as people on the way. So I think there's other factors that play into affordability in addition to what you had brought up as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. So jumping into the first strategy, and again, thinking back to the housing goals is important to, you know, maintaining our existing housing affordability and our current housing stock. And so, you know, in discussions around housing affordability, you know, often what we have can be the most affordable. And so looking at example actions that might include further growing our current programs that we have to support affordable housing, to support, you know, home housing rehab and maintenance and repair. I know the councils talked about local housing, local options around taxes, so that's part of the conversation. The local housing, a local housing trust fund is, you know, a national strategy that a lot of areas look at. And so the Washington Department of Commerce has that, so we included that as a reference. And then also back to the energy and water efficiency upgrades, how can we support some of our older housing stock that, you know, has a high cost for those? So just as an example, again, showing that we have an older housing stock, particularly in the core and older neighborhoods. You can see there on the left-hand side, the darker blue are houses that were built pre-1940. As you can see, it's pretty located in a lot of our older neighborhoods. And so just knowing that and the maintenance that comes with that, a lot of our key programs do support home repair and rehab to help people stay in their homes and maintain affordability. And many of these are partnerships with area nonprofits and organizations like SNAP. Any thoughts on this one? Keep going. So the next strategy, target incentives to increase the development of affordable housing. So just like existing housing is one side, the other side is actually getting that increase in affordable housing. And so there's a lot of different ideas around here. And again, this is just really high-level, like kind of thinking through. Some of them are pretty general right now, but there are, we can look at bonuses, incentives, fee waivers. We can look at connections with facilitation to keep the housing transportation cost down, missing middle housing design standards, smaller-scale manufacturer and mobile home parks, additional training and marketing to help raise awareness of opportunities.
I just had a comment. I don't think, and I'm not 100% sure of it, but we even have what they call mobile home parks anymore. I think, are you nodding with me, Councilmember Cathcart? I think that language isn't used anymore, and I'm not sure if that's what we use. But the other thing I was going to, if you wouldn't mind just going back to that last slide. I'm very excited to see that you added provide easy access to public transit and other efficient modes of transportation. I kind of want to add a little bit. I would say that we target where there is access, because public transit doesn't move very often. And so the centers and corridors is missing from our draft strategies, which is a core component of our comprehensive plan. So if you can find a way perhaps to weave in language that bonuses, et cetera, targeted towards centers and corridors where there's infrastructure already in place, that'd be appreciative. Thank you.
Absolutely. And so this one, I just had a couple of, you know, some current opportunities that we have, general facilities connection waiver and multifamily tax exemption. These aren't just limited to affordable housing, but they certainly can be a tool in geographic areas when we're talking about housing, affordable housing. The third strategy, expand tenant landlord support and rental improvements. And so this is really speaking to that ongoing support. I know there's been a lot of conversations around that. So there's still many things to, you know, to address there. But there is a number of areas around tenant landlord support, and then specifically on rental, on keeping rental housing affordable that could be helpful. And then this one, expand preventative and proactive code enforcement. And this is a really great example of working across departments. All of these are, because we've been working with CHHS and then also with code enforcement, have been having some really great conversations. But again, just important to remember that while there is a shortage of affordable units, there is also a lot of hazards in some of our current affordable housing. And so maintenance and repair, as well as more comprehensive programs to identify these concerns, can be really proactive in keeping our housing, our affordable housing livable and viable. And so just some more on that, that I got from our code enforcement partners, on some numbers around foreclosures, and then just a few examples of some of the current rental properties that they run into that people live in that are, you know, facing dilapidation or have unpermitted repairs that happen made. So the next one is regulating and monitoring short-term rentals. That's another way to address housing affordability. And we do have a current permitting process, but I think a lot of discussion around reviewing that and understanding compliance with that was a sort of a starting point to talk about short-term rentals. And then there are a number of ways that cities have tackled short-term rentals, whether it's a number, you know, allowing a certain number for term rentals per host, limiting the number of nights the short-term rental can be rented, understanding occupancy, you know, occupancy for a period of time prior to being offered as a short-term rental. The main takeaway is that we don't really have a great toll on short-term rentals currently. And so trying to understand how that filters into the housing affordability, and just as you were saying, Councilmember Cathcart, kind of, you know, is it displacing people at certain levels that might be pushed down, or, you know, and then further down the housing ladder, so.
What, Maran, what strategies?
I have a quick.
Well, what strategies are you looking at to find out, to get your arms around it? I mean, I know there's some services out there. I'm just wondering what other cities are doing to know what the actual footprint is of short-term rentals?
Yeah, so tracking and investigating compliance would be the first step. And, you know, that would certainly, I think, take a little bit, potentially more staff maybe, or sort of building out a program on tracking it. Again, there is a permit right now, but is everyone that has a short-term rental getting a permit? You know, there are ways that we can try to look at that more. And then beyond that, as I said, there's different strategies that they're looking at as far as limiting.
So I just noticed, we've been contacted as councilmembers that there are services that would do that for a price, so I'll just throw that.
Oh, I see, yeah.
But Councilmember, can you?
Thanks. I worked on this when I was working for Councilmember Waldrath. And probably needs to be opened up again and looked at very carefully, because although it took a year to go through the public process, it's now quite old. And we have a different set of circumstances now. I would also suggest that you contact Hotel Motel, or the hotel on Restaurant Industry, and partner with them, because they are very interested in bringing that whole piece, just more regulation and getting it under control. Because right now, we have no idea what's going on.
Oh, go ahead, Jay.
I just have a quick question. So Councilmember Cathcart and I are going to meet and talk about what we can do with bad landlords that don't maintain their property, that aren't good landlords. Is that piece, would that be included somewhere in this document? You know, how we try and get landlords to, you know, follow the rules, follow the laws? Or is that going to be kind of sitting out to the side of this? I can't hear you. I don't know if that made sense. I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't know I was on mute. But I, a great question. I don't know, Jason or Louise, if you have any thoughts on what we're doing there, or how that, it could filter, definitely. I don't know if it's more of a programmatic level, though.
Yeah, this is, Councilmember Stratton, I would say that that really is something that is, from the previous slide, more of that proactive code enforcement, allowing all parties to understand what their responsibilities are by habitable space, and really getting, you know, out of our own ways by trying to equate minimum habitability provisions to the cost of occupancy. Because again, the ones like on the previous slide showed some of those dilapidated structures that would, you know, again, fit into some rentals, and some of those are actually occupied. And it's something that they've just been allowed to, you know, again, collect rents for something like that for so long. Something needs to happen so we can improve the housing stock along with more.
Yeah, our thinking on this was that as we work with tenants and landlords, if we could find some of the lower-hanging fruit as far as trying to help the good landlords, because that's been, you know, that's been an issue for the good landlords, or those landlords that are out there that aren't following the rules, that have lots of code enforcement issues. So I think Councilmember Cathcart and I will get together and kind of talk about what we might be able to do to put something around that, give it some teeth, and work on that end to at least deal with both that smaller population of landlords.
Totally agree.
Councilmember Mum?
While we're on 2.4, this has been a longstanding discussion from the neighborhoods about how code enforcement is enforced. And for most of the last three decades, you as a neighbor have to complain. You have to have somebody who's willing to sign a piece of paper and turn in your neighbor or someone down the street. And I think the time has come where the city can have standards, and staff should be supported to go out and discover where these problems are. And usually, the police department knows where they are, because there's often criminal activity that can happen when there's an abandoned home. And I think it's okay for staff to, you know, be more proactive. And I think that's a discussion we could have with the administration, because it's really hard for neighbors to turn in neighbors, and they don't have time. And they always turn to the city to do something, and it's usually too late. So I would really love to have that further conversation, maybe Councilmember Stratton and Cathcart, when you come up with, you know, kind of where you're going, is really, you know, weaving in with the administration, funding more code enforcement officers who can be proactive for our neighborhood. And then I had another thing on 2.2. I would really suggest adding the language in centers and corridors at the end of that. Because targeting affordable housing and all the incentives in all those languages in the housing section, it's all pointing towards centers and corridors. And just to remind people why, it's because it has access to public transportation, it's near walkable centers for services, it saves folks money, because they don't have to pay for the transportation, because they're coming from the fringe areas, and it works toward our major goal of climate change. So it's really important that we weave centers and corridors in this as much as possible. Thank you.
I just want to add real quick on that. I think proactive enforcement is absolutely what's needed. We just need to make sure that there's some sort of sideboard to make sure that it's applied fairly across the city, and no one feels like they're being targeted unfairly or something like that. But other than that, I totally agree.
So then jumping to our last one on leveraging publicly and partner-owned land for affordable housing. So ideas around here might include a land bank adaptive reuse for suitable for affordable housing. And then there's a recent RCW that passed on allowing flexibility to face institutions for building housing. And this is an example that Seattle has moved forward with. They have a whole page about how, you know, what they're doing to do this. This is one area that they've been really working on, and just an example of the land bank process and getting it out of a sort of tax delinquent phase and into a clear title. That's been mentioned a lot with our stakeholders, of how the land bank could be a tool. And then just another example from another city in Washington. So that's what we have at a high level for now, and then certainly welcome ongoing feedback on any and all of these as we continue forward.
Great. Well, thanks, and I think we're going to see you again next week as well.
I'll be back next week.
And we are going to hear something closely related, transit-oriented development. But before that, we're going to have just a brief commercial from the Fire Department about some plans they have to. some plans they have to submit a grant for a hazardous materials vehicle. So Chief Schaefer, I wanted to get him on here, because it's time-sensitive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the commercial break. I don't have any product to show you, but I did want to get your blessing or concurrence based on our commitment to bring grants in front of you. But we originally had applied for an $85,000 grant with Department of Ecology for a hazardous material spill capability to add to what we have now. You had approved that initially, and then DOE came back and had more money, and they offered us an additional $100,000. And I didn't want to overstep, so I want to make sure that we have the council's direction to move forward with accepting this additional $100,000 in the process. So just allow us to pursue that, and then we'll be bringing you a formal briefing paper at the next Public Safety Committee meeting. End of commercial.
So we're just checking to see if anyone had objections to the Fire Department asking for $100,000 more that's now available for hazardous materials vehicles. Oh, Council Wilkerson.
I don't. I just have to tell Chief Schaefer, more money, more money, more money.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt this study session, but I appreciate the direction, and we'll move forward.
Yep. Great. Glad we could do that. So now we're going to hear, again, some more information about transit-oriented development, and it kind of, I think, fits in with Councilmember Mum's comments about our centers and corridors strategy, and as we sync that up with transit-oriented development and including really high-performing transit outside existing centers and corridors, I'm really intrigued on how we accommodate that. And I'm not sure exactly who's taking the lead on that, so somebody step forward, and I will turn it over to you for the next 45 minutes.
Cool. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Colin Quinhurst with Planning Services, and I'm here to introduce our speaker today, Jason Graff of Center-Based Planning, who is the lead consultant on the Transit-Oriented Development Framework Study, or TOD study. And this study will identify some tools and strategies that are best suited to Spokane for supporting transit-oriented development or TOD along our high-performance transit lines. And so Jason is leading that study, and he brings a wealth of experience from across the US, from Edmonton down to Santa Fe to Minneapolis-St. Paul, but also experience here in Spokane. And so this study will use his expertise to guide us. And so with that, I'll hand it off to Jason.
Great, thanks, Colin. It's a pleasure to be in front of you all today, and Lori, it's nice to see you again for a second time. So this'll be old hat for you, but for the rest, it's an introduction to the project. I'm going to get started here and pull up my show. And can everyone see the intro slide, which is, intro kickoff meeting, TOD fundamentals? Thank you, Colin.
We can.
And away we go. The agenda's here, five parts. As Colin mentioned, the Spokane Planning Development Services is leading the project. They've developed an oversight committee with ICM, Spokane Transit Authority, and the Spokane Regional Transportation Council. And Michael Cathcart is our council sponsor from your group, helping lead the charge on this project. We have a couple of milestones through our process that we're going to come back to City Council and Plan Commission for your guidance and decision-making as we do initial analysis, as we come up with some preliminary concepts, and then we draft kind of final recommendations. The city has also established a webpage on the city's website, so we have access then for some public engagement, providing information on the project through that venue, and we're going to look for an opportunity through the virtual community meeting to have a touch point with the community as we get closer to a set of recommendations for regulations along high-performance transit corridors. As Colin mentioned, I'm Jason Graff. I'm with Center-Based Planning out of Portland, and I'm assisted by Angela Planning Group, who are really experts in mixed-use zoning code development, so that right kind of language and the review process then for zoning will really fine-tune and outline for you all to then use as a tool across the city on your high-performance transit routes. My background is in downtown revitalization, and specifically in downtown implementation. And I bring forward to you all the city of Lincoln, because it reminds me much of Spokane. You have a similar population, you have the university that is really central to the downtown, and is a partner in redevelopment and creating a quality of life in your city that's pretty unique. Much like Spokane, you, Lincoln has substantial investment in their downtown, focusing on three primary districts. Their core employment center with the capital and reinforcing it as a retail center reminds me a lot of the work that you all have done downtown in creating a strong regional retail presence downtown, the strength of your convention center, the strength of the university and supporting, you know, basketball tournaments, and really putting you on the map as a growth center in these mid-tier cities. And much like you all, Lincoln is sort of in between a lot of other large metropolitan areas, but it's doing just fine, thank you, and they really have tools in place then to kickstart revitalization in their downtown. For them, it started in 2005 and really got going between 2012 and 2016. So the image here is of Haymarket, they're an entertainment district that's really, was really led by the Pinnacle Arena, setting the stage for redevelopment, mixed-use housing, hotel, entertainment, and restaurants. So this is a key destination in the downtown. The plan then really gave directive for council and the Economic Development Department to begin to stimulate development in that district. So it was a $22 million tax secret finance that really stimulated 140 million in private investment. Since 2018, across the three districts, Lincoln has had over $1 billion of investment in downtown. And that's allowed them really to emphasize these additional quality-of-life aspects to their downtown, to knit those districts together and make the downtown more attractive as a growth center, and really address the needs of what's emerging in terms of downtown and desire for walkable and bikeable environments. And this is really a step up for Lincoln. They really got ahead of the curve nationally by building a protected bikeway one mile long across all three districts and linked a two-mile circumvental trail system that surrounds the city. And this project has been noticed nationally. It's a part of the NACTO Urban Design, Bikeway Design, and I worked on that project with the Downtown Lincoln Association, to work with businesses and property owners to meld in that walk-bike facility then through the downtown. $14 million project funded with TIF and federal grant money. Louis gave me an opportunity to see some of the additional work that you all are doing outside of sort of the downtown core and that Sprague corridor and the South University District, and I think you're really moving in the right direction. You have some of the pieces that you're doing to invest in your downtown, and I think that South University District is really a next driver for growth for you all, and it reminds me of a project in Medford, Oregon, similar manufacturing, light industrial area, urban renewal district-owned, several parcels, as well as Lithia Motors, and together they partnered to create a new employment district in the downtown. And really what the driver for that investment was, a series of park blocks that then created a public gathering space that the downtown lacked, using that as a tool then to bring Lithia as a corporate headquarters into that location and adding new businesses, brew pubs, and retail around this public space. This is the centerpiece for the Para Festival that Medford hosts each year. That was a $4.2 million TIF that the Urban Renewal District used and leveraged with the developer, Lithia Motors, then to add additional $40 million of investment in the downtown. Regulatory codes and standards play a significant role in guiding the form of development in places where you want to see growth occur. And in Albany, it was critical that we preserve a historic character of downtown, but also look for opportunities to bring in more housing and utilizing parking strategies as a potential tool to lower the cost of housing development in the downtown. So you preserve what you love the most, what you want to protect, but you look for opportunities for then additional growth to come into those areas and provide the types of uses you want to see in the downtown, housing being one for the city of Albany. Angela Planning Group really led that zoning code effort, and so they were the lead, and I helped assist them to make sure that we met the intent of these downtown districts. I recently completed Bus Rapid Transit Oriented Development Plans for the Gold Line in St. Paul. So that's a nine-mile future BRT route, 11 stations, passing through five cities and two counties. We developed transit-oriented development plans, infrastructure, and codes and ordinances for a number of those cities along the corridor. What's interesting about working through such a diverse range of cities and populations is along the corridor, you see areas where transit-dependent populations exist, and what you can do to preserve those communities and allow them to continue to have access and stay in the neighborhood, as well as to look at growth opportunities in some of the suburban cities further east that haven't seen really urban development and haven't had high-performance transit come online. So new tools for cities that haven't seen this before, and really, we're giving them then the regulations that promote development and growth in their communities. The cost of the BRT for the Gold Line, $460 million. We identified about 155 acres for new development and estimate about $1.4 billion then of new investment that could occur along that corridor. It's all about spending money to make money, in a sense. So we bring this to the project here, and the purpose of the TOD study then for Spokane is to identify an approach for transit-supported regulatory changes and priority investments. How do you get to the stations and link the stations to destinations? And how that framework can then be applied along high-performance transit corridors throughout the city and implement the comprehensive plan, centers and corridors, growth strategy? And I think it was, Candace really made a good point, that you have centers and corridors, and you have high-performance transit lines, those don't always intersect. In some instances, they do. And so I think this gives us a tool then to be able to leverage across both of those growth strategy plans in your community. We're going to focus our study then on the city line BRT, Spokane Transit Authority's six-mile BRT line, 28 stations moving through five districts in the downtown. That investment, the Spokane Transit Authority bringing that reliable and frequent transit is tremendous. This is a growth opportunity for the city of Spokane. And the function of the BRT, as I understand it, and looking at the research and talking to folks at STA, you're really creating a system that nationally, BRT is taking on more than other types of systems. So for instance, typically transit was around peak capacity, bringing folks from outside into downtown urban centers or employment centers, even in a regional context. And now we're thinking about high-performance transit is daily use throughout the day, connection to goods and services, as well as employment, access to medical, access to education. And by having these alignments running through the core of downtowns and through the core of your neighborhoods, the ridership potential really increases even more. So we're not worried about peak. We've got the opportunity to utilize this throughout the day. In Spokane, this is a $92 million investment along this corridor. And what our study really is intended to do is, how can we leverage that investment to improve the quality of life, to identify opportunities for transit-supported development and vacant and underutilized sites, and how do we connect stations to destinations within each of these five neighborhoods? And there's really some fundamentals that we stand by when we move through this process. And station area planning revolves around a geographic area. It starts off, obviously, at the station, and we look for creating activity to promote safety and increase ridership directly at the station. And also, within a quarter mile, that neighborhood station area, we look for opportunities for potentially infill, adding new housing options, preserving affordability in that outer ring. And then the half-mile is really about connections. How can we best connect the station to destinations out in the neighborhood? So it's about integrating land use and transportation to increase transit ridership and enhance quality of life, and we focus on three primary elements. Station location environment is the first, safety is the priority. So we want to promote activity at the station, create well-defined crossings so people can get to transit. And this illustration really hits those key points. Can I get to the station platform? Are there crosswalks? Are traffic control? Are there facilities for me to get there from the neighborhood? Can I get from station to station along the transit route safely, walking and biking? And at the station, are there activities? Are buildings oriented to the station to promote what we call eyes on the station, safety? Are there opportunities for goods and services close to the station so that people can chain reps? They're not just going out off to another part of the city, but maybe there's some opportunities for goods and services close to home at the transit station. We then look at destination.
Can I make one comment related to that?
Yep.
And this is really, this is probably more of an STA thing than us, but I think, as you're talking about the stations along the route, I tend to think that the policy should be, if we're going to put a station, that we or STA would just simply acquire that property. I know there's one along the route now where we're taking a portion of the frontage of a house, but as you're talking, it's really making me think that we're going to be trying to activate these areas, and I don't think you want someone's home 10 feet behind the station, if that's what we're really trying to encourage. So I think that's just a discussion point that we probably need to have where these stations are going. And I'm thinking about Wellesley and some of these other places where we're thinking about Bus Rapid Transit.
Sure. That's a good point. Thank you. That second element then is destinations, and station access. So between station to station, but also from the station out into the neighborhood, we want to look for, on key routes, direct continuous links from stations, stations and to those destinations. We look at five-minute systems. Traditionally, transit-oriented development has been focused on the quarter mile, so a five-minute walk from the station is really where about 80% of your riders are coming from. But in communities that are investing in bike facilities as well as walk facilities, we can extend that five-minute system out a mile. A mile then, bike ride is, five-minute bike ride is about a mile out. So we're increasing ridership potential then by focusing on these two, five-minute walk and bike systems. And from a policy perspective, how we design and modify our streets are extremely important. That's how we access transit, that's how we access destinations. And so then, we really need to flip our thinking and pushing for walk-bike priorities on those routes that are most critical to get folks to transit in the places they want to get to around the community, makes transit viable. And there's a number of different ways that we can access the station, and the current driver now, and what I'm seeing nationally in association with the Bus Rapid Transit route, is that we're integrating walk-and-bike facilities within that same right-of-way and corridor. So we're linking station to station, and this has become something that's more and more becoming important for accessing transit and being integrated in these right-of-ways. We're investing with the BRT, and if we can spend a little additional money, we can also add bike facilities. We're investing with the BRT and if we can spend a little additional money, we can also add bike facilities. Now, there's also opportunities to connect to the station in a number of different routes and different ways that connect the station into destinations nearby. Neighborhood access streets obviously play that role. You have tools locally in your Greenways program to then really reinforce walking and biking on these low stress streets. Of course, Cincinnati is one pilot project that's in process now. And that's a tool that we can look at potentially applying in other station areas. We also know along these corridors, there are auto dominated streets and there's additional considerations that we need to put in place so that there's safe access station to station. Or if folks have to cross a busy street to get to a station, that we have the type of facilities in place to make that easily and accessible. And then finally, the third element, transit supportive land use, is looking at a mix of station and street oriented uses. And that is a range around the stations as well as a quarter mile out. And so that station neighborhood, the transition area, about a five-minute walk from the station, we want to look for the potential for infill and development that really addresses the missing middle. And I think this characteristic, this type of development is really conducive to majority of the stations along your BRT route. So where do we have opportunities through vacant, underutilized properties to increase some of the residential density? Create housing opportunities and choice for neighborhoods that tend to have one type of housing. But that those that that development then integrates with the context of neighborhoods. And quarter housing is a really good example of how we can add additional residents to the neighborhood that still meet the context of that district in particular.
James.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you go back two slides, please? There you go. Is that one block? Does that represent one block?
No, it's more of a diagrammatic that would represent, it could be six blocks. I mean, it's just to show how from a single family you might transition up to to mid-rise.
So I was just, I was, I was interested in the transition process. That's why I thought it might be to scale of a block. But I can see that, yeah, it could probably be four blocks. But yes, I was interested in the transition process because I think that's really important to have buy-in from the neighborhoods and to make sure that you don't have a five-story apartment building next to a single-family residence.
Absolutely.
Thanks for showing that.
Sure. You know, in Portland, we would, our growth strategy is to increase housing along transportation corridors. But as you know, if you're a half-block from that transportation corridor, it becomes problematic. And so, yeah, transitions and building hikes play a role in how do you increase development along that commercial corridor, fronting right where the transit is, but but how do we reduce impacts then on the neighborhoods just outside? So it is, it is an ongoing task to make that work well. So at the station, the transit supportive land use, we're actually looking for increasing the development opportunity, if possible, at the station. Of course, again, we're looking at vacant and underutilized properties to add in that new development. In some instances, there's already transit supportive development there that we can reinforce. But ideally in a station hub, you look for these types of opportunities where you have ground floor retail, dining, that really support an eighteen-hour environment that might have housing or office uses above. But we also know that there's different characteristics along the corridor. And it may be that we have opportunities to introduce a commercial node into a primarily residential corridor, but still offering some of those basic daily needs, goods and services in a smaller floor, uh, from that building that supports an active station environment and provide goods and services close to people at home. And the third tier is then we may just have opportunities where we can do some, for instance, residential infill. But we want to ensure that that type of development is really supporting an active street environment and potentially increasing some housing density along the way. The station area plan then provides the policy and implementation guidance for a station area and it's based on assessments of the station area conditions. So you're building for a station area that's really representative of the character of that station and what the opportunities for development may be. Frameworks can spend of these elements that you see here on the left, a vision, what are the types of transit supportive land use? What is the development capacity in the opportunity areas where growth might occur? Where are those critical access, station access routes? What types of infrastructure need to be improved over time? And then implementation, what are the priorities? Where should we begin to invest our money to most maximize transit ridership, quality of life goals, adding housing, for instance, and other goods and services close to people's homes? The second piece then are the TOD standards. What are those appropriate transit supportive uses that we want to preserve around the station? Opportunities for infill in the station neighborhood. And then we also address things about pedestrian orientation, creating a safe, comfortable street environment. That's about both these lines and active edges. Are we meeting some density and FAR thresholds? And then our streets, those key circulation routes, really promoting walking and biking. So we take that information, we're going to do a compressed station framework for the BRT, for the City Line BRT route. And under staff recommendation, we're not going to address the entire corridor. We're going to focus on that segment from Cincinnati at Trent, north up to Mission and then east to Spokane Community College. And our process is going to last about seven months. There's four phases that you see here. Those two white boxes represent milestones where we're going to come back to council on the plan commission for your feedback on the deliverables up to that point. In phase four, where we have some draft recommendations is when we would like to have a touch point with the community, possibly through some type of virtual community event. So that's in process. We're putting that together and we'll, we'll share that with you as we, as we get closer to a decision on how we'll execute that. So the first phase is where we are now. So about mid-March, we'll finalize exploring the corridor conditions where we've become familiar with some of these basic details. Station environment, what are the, what's the activity like there today? We need to do an assessment. This is an image on the top of Mission Avenue and you can see some station locations here at Napa. We have active uses of the station. We have singles and crosswalks that promote access to the station. On Cincinnati, for instance, there's a blank wall at the station. There's a large parking lot on the other side. And so are there opportunities to change those conditions? But we can put a place to address some of those so that over time, we're promoting more active uses and permeability of buildings then at the stations. It's important that we locate where destinations are so that each stop would know the routes that folks are going to want to take, either to get to the transit station or to connect to destinations out in the neighborhood. So we look for population density, where are riders coming from, traffic generators, where people going to, parks and open space. I think in the time of COVID, we all know how parks and open space have become more valuable assets to the community. And really, I think the the use of public open space has increased dramatically. And then where STA expects their high ridership stations to be. Because these are the locations where we can begin to focus investments so that we're maximizing ridership and development potential. We need to become familiar with TOD opportunities. So where is the low-hanging fruit? Vacant, aging and underutilized properties. Michael made an interesting comment about are there opportunities near a station to acquire property? So that it's either city-owned or Spokane Transit Authority owned. Because that opens the door then for the types of encouraging the type of development you want. For instance, affordable housing or other types of development. As as the city controls a property, then they can control the development process to a certain degree. Where opportunities for development occur, we then want to look at where gaps are. So within each district or on the corridor at a station, is affordable housing something that that we need to include? Is that an opportunity for development? Daily needs, goods and services, and of course, parks and open space. Because the amenities that occur along the corridor really also spur development. So it's important that we're addressing where the gaps are and look for opportunities to fill those gaps where there's locations to do that. We'll then identify the TOD policies that you currently have in place. So the city has done some work along the Hamilton Corridor, but you can see here along Mission, we're primarily moving through three stations that are located in single-family residential. And other opportunities along the corridor to address transit supportive development close into the stations. We'll work through a framework plan, so station area framework for each of the stations along the Cincinnati and Mission Avenue segment. And we'll look for a TOD regulatory approach, how we might regulate for transit supportive development and promoting access. What we're looking for in that station area framework is to define the character of each of the districts. They're unique. What are the features that define those districts? What would the intent then for transit or development be to support that neighborhood? Where are the opportunities and what are the major destinations we need to connect to? Typically, in an exercise of station area framework, we want to establish station typologies. Not every station is the same. And so you see the list here. It could be neighborhood oriented, limited change, or it could be a mixed-use opportunity where more development might occur around the station. It may support as an employment area or commerce and commercial development. So we'll overlay that to inform the type intensity of transit oriented development at each of the stations. And we'll look at a hierarchy of station access route. So addressing the needs that may be short today for station to station access, looking to those key destinations. Of course, closing gaps and maybe proposing new routes. I think on the east end of the corridor, it's become apparent that the Children of the Sun Trail Planning is an important piece of the work that's being done as part of the NSC. And how can we inform the location of that trail and how might it contribute to the work we're doing here in accessing the stations along Mission Avenue? And then I will look at some regulatory approaches, maybe utilizing what you already have in place today. For instance, expanding the centers and corridor zoning and or looking at form-based code standards. Some of the way between the Hamilton Street along the City Line Corridor. Or we may look at some opportunities for another type of of approach such as overlays. We'll then prepare a regular framework within a specific focus area. So we're going to work with staff to identify, is it a segment of the corridor that we do some more detailed regulatory recommendations? Is it a station area? There may be multiple stations or a node. And so that's to be determined later on in the process. But we'll create a regulatory and standards outline for how you would apply it to that geographic area. We'll define an administrative process to how do you review development? And then we'll bring those findings back to you all to fine tune for a final document that we would then do in the last phase. And so that really summarizes all phases of the project and puts together an action plan detailing next steps and further regulatory implementation measures that would be implemented by staff. So that.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.
The recommendations often come from the neighborhoods. And so that's why I need to share with you. Anytime we have language that says we're going to tell them, no, it goes the other way around. We're a grassroots community and we need to have them at the table early on. I think they'll be supportive of this because they're going to have.
Jason's, Jason's scope is a bit more limited. We have a localized plan to do additional outreach and what's in that. So, yeah.
So just helping here because.
I appreciate that Candace. No, I, this is exactly what we need to hear.
No, the neighborhoods are, are, that's who we're doing this for and with, not just for. So the other thing I'd add is I'm expecting also, and I'm seeing elements of it, but an active transportation plan could maybe be one of the deliverables here. So where do we need the bike lanes? Where do we need improvements in the sidewalks? And Louis is nodding his head. That's, that's part of the deliverable.
That's a part of the deliverable. Yeah.
Excellent. I love all your modeling. I love your examples. I thought you were doing commercial for your company at first because you're doing a lot of stuff, which is cool.
Just finish on credibility. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was good. But finally, I want to invite you to come to STA because we would love to see how you're doing this because there's going to be a need to use some of these outcomes and models for other high, you know, BRTs. We've got one on Monroe that goes all the way up to Regal. I could see applications of what you're doing. I would love to have you come and present when it's timely to do so at the Spokane Transit Authority. And now I'm seeing Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, on that note of STA, I, I think one thing to to think about, and I'm sure you are, is, you know, what are the the numbers that we need riding the Central City Line to make it as cost-effective as possible? And really think about making sure that we're, we're building out around the stations and allowing for enough population there to to actually fill, fill that BRT line throughout the day and and make sure that we're providing the most effective service for the, for the community. So I think that's just one aspect that we really need to think about as this gets going.
Okay, anything else? All right, we're going, thank you. Jason is awesome. We love this stuff.
I'm excited.
It's a great way to integrate with this amazing project. And it's really going to, I think, help revitalize that part of town, which also could, could benefit from this kind of investment. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Kevin Pacozzo has been so patient, but we're super excited because he's kicking off and wrapping up our meeting today with our transportation plan. Go for it, Kevin.
Okay. Thank you, council members. I will share my screen now. So that should be showing up now. I get a thumbs up from someone that we're seeing that.
We can see that.
Okay, great. So yes, good afternoon now. I'm Kevin Pacozzo from Integrated Capital Management. Here today to talk about our annual update to our transportation program and more specifically, the reconstruction matrix and how that relates to how projects are added or included in our six-year capital streets program. Also have with me today Catherine Miller. So I'll turn it over to her briefly.
Just want to give a little context to council. I sat down with council president and council member Cathcart. We had kind of a discussion that really kicked off for this meeting today. And effectively, since we only have twenty minutes today, we're breaking up the bigger conversation. Just want to give that to you in this slide here in the sense that we are going to focus on the reconstruction matrix. And some of the conversations we were having was questions about where do those projects come from? Council president was articulating that they just kind of appeared on the six-year program. So we wanted to take a quick step back and talk about that. We, we actually gave that full presentation on, on the matrix way back in March of 2020, which of course was the kickoff to COVID. So by all means, I'm sure all of this had a lot of different things on our mind at that moment. But that was the presentation that Inga Note gave to. moment, but that was the presentation that Inga Note gave to council where she broke down and gave you a really detailed understanding of how projects are selected. And at that time, it was pretty quiet from council. We didn't really get any feedback in terms of if there was anything broke or needed to be relooked at or any kind of issues there. So Kevin's going to give you a high clip, look at the matrix again, just to remind you of kind of how we go through aligning everything we're doing and selecting projects from our comprehensive plan as it comes through. We're also going to touch on a topic that came out in 2017, so several of you weren't there at the time, and that was the roadways of significance. That was a concept, a policy, that was intended to help select outside of the matrix while still keeping the matrix whole. And what I was hearing from council president, there might be some interest in maybe taking a look at some concept like that into the future that Kevin's also going to talk about briefly. The rest of the conversation is really going to fall into March 4th, where we're going to cover the rest of the program, how projects kind of come about from the ped bike perspective or neighborhood or impact fees, as well as council president was talking about wanting to maybe understand a new section in the program. And we just termed it just as a starting point as regional projects, where we're really having border roadways around the city as potentially start. And Kevin will touch a little bit about that today as well. And then street maintenance, where those are coming from. So again, most of that's going to come later. I'm going to turn the rest of this over to Kevin.
Great, thank you. So first, just a little more background and history. You know, again, the purpose of the reconstruction matrix and where it applies is really just to our full reconstruction types of projects within our program. It doesn't apply to, you know, maintenance grant and overlay or bike ped trails. It's focused on those full reconstruction types of projects. As noted here, that process started back in, and was developed back in around 2015, 2016, there was extensive amount of work done by the TCTS, so the Planning Commission, Transportation Subcommittee, along with staff, a lot of good work done there in developing that matrix. And that was done during the update to the transportation portion, chapter four of the comprehensive plan. It was applied within subsequent years, starting with the 2018 to 2023 budget cycle. And other groups were involved in development as well and providing input, including the planning commission on that process. And council has had various presentations over the years on the details of it as well, including what Catherine just mentioned, the most recent deep dive was back in March 2020, where Inga presented the real details of how that matrix and project selection process really works. So today, I'm not going to go in deep with our limited time as Inga did last year, but just to give you the high clip overview, the matrix evaluation process includes these six categories. And these categories are pulled directly from the transportation section of the comprehensive plan. So these are six goals from the comprehensive plan. So the process is aligned with that. Each of those categories are allotted up to 10 points in the scoring, matrix scoring process. And then going a step further, within each of those six overarching areas or categories, there are these specific areas or subcategories, I'm calling it, where each project is evaluated and scored. So I won't go down all of them, but just to highlight some within the enhanced public health and safety category, there are these four areas where each project is scored and evaluated. Bike safety, pet safety, priority, vehicle safety, another example within the overarching goal of maximizing public benefits, fiscal responsibility with integrated public investments. You're looking at considering things like CSO integration, water integration, pavement condition, and ability to leverage the plan. And you can't read this and don't continue to necessarily, but really the outcome of that matrix scoring process is a list of really all the projects and has each of the evaluation categories and subcategories with their score totaling up to a total project score. And you kind of have a rank order, if you will, of the projects based on that score. So kind of pivot for a second to what Catherine mentioned earlier. Around the same time or similar era in development of the matrix, there was this kind of parallel discussion on this topic of roadways of significance. There would really be more focus on projects that for one reason or another, you know, simply don't score well within that matrix scoring process, but where there's a desire or need to advance them. The discussion at that time was more focused around the kind of economic development areas in terms of identifying projects that provide economic development opportunity or maybe within targeted areas defined by the council for economic growth. You know, some example areas of, you know, where this, where projects may rise to the surface would be in the yard, Northeast PDA, Sprague Tip, Westbunce PDA. And part of the approach, again, is what was discussed previously was, you know, the council would have to make some decisions about in terms of prioritizing projects to bump up in the matrix or improve in the six-year program. Some of those projects might be more limited in terms of their scope, where the scope for the initial construction is really focused on the most pressing need, the priority of that project with the integrated elements to the project out over time. And an example project would be Freya Street up in the yard area.
Just to clarify, the reason it was focused on economics is that was the vehicle to keep this policy very focused and narrow. The concept of being that you don't want to have such a large window of opportunity that the matrix itself becomes insignificant and basically worthless at that point. So that's why economic was picked, because it was a very focused reason to pick outside and thus keeping the whole of the matrix still valid.
And, you know, ultimately, you know, there was some discussion at the council levels, my understanding on this topic, but ultimately, this roadway of significance approach wasn't really adopted or carried forward really for implementation. But as Catherine mentioned, you know, this is a topic that is interesting council, you know, can be revisited and some of this past discussion could serve as a framework for that discussion. Coming back to really the matrix process, I sent out to you guys earlier a PDF. It's a multi-page document. This is just a clip of it, and I will jump to that document here in seconds, but just just kind of, you know, giving the heads up of sort of what to look for, if you will. If you want to open that document, you can, you don't have to, but it might be easier for you to scroll up and down it. Before I do that though, just kind of preface with how that was created. So my understanding, again, there's, you know, interest in looking at some of the projects in the program and understanding where those projects sit or relate within the overall matrix scoring, how they relate to other projects around the matrix that aren't yet in the program, where they sit in terms of their score. So for the purposes of this discussion, I just pulled out the projects that are unfunded within our six-year program, so that in general, that tends to be the projects that are in the outer years, 2024 to 2026 range typically. I have not included the near-term projects. Those are projects where we have grant dollars already identified, projects where we're already moving into design and constructions planned or anticipated in the next two to three years, let's say. So along with that, within that list, and so are the bulk of the projects, are the remaining projects from the matrix scoring process that have not yet been added to the six-year program. And then just a final note, kind of as relates to our overall budget update this year, as of now, from the staff level side of things, we aren't recommending or proposing any new additions from the matrix to be added to the six-year program. And that's just based on funding and, you know, whether we hit or not on grant applications in the last year, there's already a pretty sizable list of these unfunded projects, which we'll get to here in a second, that are in those outer years that are unfunded. So as of now, we're not suggesting or proposing to add any new projects to it. That said, if there is interest from council in kind of going down that list and maybe adding a project, you know, a potential option is to look to swap out projects. And these unfunded projects that are in our program today would be the logical candidates if there's a desire to swap out a project from the matrix that's not in the six-year budget yet and we want to move it into it, into those unfunded projects with a logical location for the projects to take out. So with that, I'll jump over to that list. Just to give you a, just kind of, you know, make sure everyone understands what we're looking at here, what I've done is I've shaded all the projects in gray that are projects that are currently in our six-year transportation program but are, again, unfunded based on that kind of criteria I mentioned earlier.
And the clarification of unfunded is we haven't received any federal or state grants.
Correct.
We have our local money to propel it for design and get it ready and preliminary studies and those kind of things, but effectively, they're far enough out in the program. We haven't started that work yet and we're seeking funds.
Yep. And then the remainder of the projects are highlighted in gray, and that's the bulk of the projects as you kind of go down the list. And those are projects that are in, have been evaluated through the matrix scoring process and are scored and ranked but have not yet been added. So just to, you know, I won't go down necessarily project for project, but just to highlight some of them, you know, some of these projects logically, you know, we see upper or higher scoring projects are already in our program, Main Avenue, Spokane Falls, Four Rars, downtown, First Avenue. And then as you said, there, I'll see more and more of the green projects, and those are the projects that have, again, in the matrix and have been evaluated and scored but have not yet been added. There's some projects and you'll see that it's not, you haven't simply just added the top, you know, eight, 10, 15 projects. There are projects that are further down in the ranking that are added. It's important to note that the matrix was never intended to be, you know, very literal that we say, hey, you know, a project at 31 has to be built and prioritized before a project that's scored a three. It's not that literal. Projects within a couple points of each other are, you know, effectively the same, if you will. And there's projects that are highlighted, some of these gray projects, I've kind of noted on the side in this comments section. In some cases, there's projects that have been included or moved forward within the program because of some other drivers. So I've kind of tried to highlight some of those. In many cases, it's a utility-driven issue in terms of why the projects were pulled into program and maybe prioritized ahead of a project and maybe scored a little bit higher. And in some cases, there's some economic development reasons, Broadway Avenue down here, you know, it's a focus on Blues Day and proximity to County and Public Safety Campus, for instance. So I think I'll pause there for the moment with our limited time and want to provide at least some opportunity for the council to kind of share their thoughts and ask any questions.
Kevin, thank you for sending this to us. I think we're just getting a fresh look at it right now. We can give you some comments now, but would you like us to take a deeper dive and send you an email? Is that what you're looking for?
Looking for maybe the continuation, maybe council president can jump in if he is online. There was just, again, a comment that there was not confusion, but just misunderstanding where projects are just popping in. And so what we said, we'd come back and show you where they sat originally in the list, and this is a good example. When you look at the comprehensive plan, those six elements we chose from, it was not shocking that the highest-scoring projects were all downtown.
Right.
Because they hit on all the criteria. And so the Subcommittee clearly said, we can't turn off downtown for 10 years and rebuild all downtown. So the committee decided they wanted to focus on the CCL route. And that's why you see the CCL route made it in predominantly. And then you see items like six, seven, and eight, those are all still in the downtown area. We, of course, were working on Riverside with, it was already in the program. Anyhow, so that's when the committee left the downtown and then started trying to go out into the rest of the city. And so it's really not joking around in that sense. It is when you look at the list, but not when you understand all of the highest-scoring are downtown and we're not just going to prioritize the downtown over everything else, is what the committee's discussion was at the time.
And my recollection of the conversation, it was that the reason to do it was it was timely because we're already ripping it up for the CCL. So we've got, if you're going to do it once, the downtown people would prefer we just do it all at once. So it was a timing issue as well. And you say it's
It was with the CCL. I'm sure Carlsbro is still in the lineup. We don't want to see the CCL go, you know, to have to stop and move to a different road three days after they opened. So we wanted to try to time it was the intent. And of course, you know, the funds from the federal level haven't been flowing as quickly when we first started this in 2017, 2016 in terms of our conversations. So fortunately, it didn't line up the way we'd hoped, but that was the intent back then.
Okay, so yeah, council president had to move on, so you're stuck with
No problem. Actually, I remember Cathcart was there too, so you can jump in if you want.
Right. Any other council comments? I just have one more thing I was going to mention, and that is, I hope we can have a little bit of optimism here because what I'm hearing at the state level is a lot of energy around a transportation package. And what I'm hearing at the federal level is a lot of conversation about transportation packages. So I guess that's my question, are you feeling that as well? And do you feel we'll be prepared? Because often they love those shovel-ready projects, you know? And they come to you at the last minute to shove something through. So do you feel like we can do that?
I feel like we can put together a package, and it has to be flexible because we don't know the rules upfront. And you're right, Candace, in the past, they've come back through fast and furious and very focused. So depending on, and actually, I think it was the abonation that said they learned that there is no such thing as shovel-ready projects. So hopefully, there is some learning in that at the federal level that we can actually look out further than months and actually look out and put a package together. I personally think we could put a very strong package together for the downtown, but that's going to take time to put into the ground. What we've learned from the downtown is it's very complex with all of the utilities, but it's very much needed. So that's just one idea in terms of you could come with a package that looked at a core area of downtown that we want to do what we did in other areas to rebuild the vaulted sidewalks and to do what we were attempting to do on Riverside, to rebuild the road and sidewalks at the same time. So I think that's a potential candidate, but we have to listen to see how they're forming it.
Counselor Cathcart?
Yeah, just a couple things. So on the transportation package side, I know the ask, the ask that I keep encouraging or pushing for is that they would allocate some additional dollars for local communities like ours, but particularly in low-income census tracts, where I think you can get a big bang for the buck in going in and touching some of those streets. And I think it will help with encouraging more redevelopment and stuff like that. But also for our PDAs, I think particularly the ante-PDA, where there's just a lack of investment right now, we're really trying to improve that. But until then, it would be great to get some additional support for some of the street projects that we need to finish in there. And then the other thing I was going to mention is if we go back and look at the matrix again and maybe reevaluate how that is set up, the two things I would suggest be included to some extent, not sure how they'd be weighted, but one, again, low-income census tracts, but two would be if it's a route that gets a lot of use from either heavy vehicles or even city, you know, like garbage trucks, that sort of thing, if there's a lot of use that might be creating more of an impact than other streets. I just think that that's something to think about as well. And then the last question I had was for these routes that are on the Central City Line, has there been thought to making a very specific ask in a federal transportation package since I think part of that, the Central City Line project is funded federally? Perhaps there's an opportunity to get some dollars specifically for that.
And that's an interesting discussion because federal dollars won't usually be spent on city streets, and Catherine can explain that. It's a tricky, you'd think that it would, but there's some very strict guidelines of what you can use those transportation dollars for.
Yeah, federal roads have to, excuse me, they have to be on designated roads. So those are usually your principal archerials. So you do have some limitations of where those federal dollars can be spent. I do have Inga on the line. I believe actually our matrix does count for ADT. Again, it's against everything else, but it is in there to try to acknowledge that if we're going to spend our limited resources, it's in the higher use areas first. So when you look at these roadways, you shouldn't see a low ADT in the high 30s. You should see low ADTs in the teens in terms of those scores.
Kevin, you're correct. It does account for ADT. It also accounts for whether it's on the freight and goods map in the state and ranks that accordingly. And it also And it also
Exactly. So we did try to grab a lot of that information, but with our little time left, I just want to make sure we're understanding where council is at. If Brian comments about wanting to maybe reassess a policy to pick outside of the matrix, you know, again, the roadways of significance was a first attempt. We're happy to take that back to the transportation subcommittee and have that conversation. It seemed like council president also was acknowledging that he's not necessarily trying to create a big door, if you will, and defund or defunct the matrix itself, but wants to keep it a tight option as well. So we're happy to take that back and have that conversation. As Kevin mentioned, just because, at least in the last several cycles, we haven't seen the federal dollars, and so we, as a staff, aren't going to be recommending a new project because it's full right now. So obviously, with council's request for, for example, Strong Road, we would be looking to the great projects to remove one and put that one in if that's what ultimately happens. So that's what we wanted to highlight for council to just be tracking on that.
Yeah, and some of that has changed conditions, you know, with the addition on the one you just spoke of, we've got a brand new middle school that's completely full and a second elementary school that's completely full that's going to be putting stress on that road. There's just some things that are happening quicker than we can keep pace with. And of course, I think all these projects are worthy, right? It's really just coming down to which one is first. The other thing I was going to mention, just in your comments, it might be helpful, and I think it's accounted for in the matrix, is some of these are in centers. Like I look at Wistock Way. Wistock Way is in a center, and there is some economic ties to that. We did get the STA funding for the brand new STA build out of that beautiful station there on campus. But in companion, we had hoped to create that boulevard, and I think, Catherine, you were involved in that as well, in some of that planning. That kickstarts the things that the private developers are kind of waiting for to call on that. They had some ideas of some restaurants and some other things that they wanted to do. So I think that might be important to put in the comment that it's on, like the Monroe is on a corridor, or that this is, it helps us sort of frame other things, land use and everything, for us to make the decision-making. And I also wanted to thank Inga and you, Catherine, and the other folks that worked with us on the PCTS when we developed this in 2014, 2015, and 2016, because we really have come a long way in how we determine what roads we fix. Back in the day, it was pavement condition people, so this is much more targeted and focused. And we do include low income also, council member Cathcart, that is something that is in the deep parts of the matrix. So I think we can always tweak it, and I will have that conversation. I support what council president is saying, let's look at these ones that have regional significance or other things that reach our other priorities. But in general, it's exciting to see that the system is working.
Okay, so just to reiterate, just to make sure we're, we're going to go off and do a lot of work, we want to make sure we're on the same page. And so in that sense, we're not hearing that the matrix itself needs a whole lot of work as much as understanding a roadway of significance, a policy to pick outside of the matrix. And so we want to take that back. We're going to go ahead, just so everyone knows, at our next transportation subcommittee, we're going to go through the complete matrix in the level of detail that Inga did before with council. We're going to do that again with the subcommittee because people have changed places. So we can have that full conversation and see if that group has anything in the matrix that they feel is missing, or we can tweak or make better. But between the matrix itself and looking at a new policy to pick outside of the matrix, that's the focus we're going to be doing. Do I hear anything else from council that they're asking for at this point?
I think people are happy. You guys are doing a great job under some really tough time and financial constraints.
Okay, and that's our marching orders at this point, just so we're all on the same page. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, everybody. And thank you, Cap, too, and Inga.
Yes, thank you.
Are doing top-notch work. I think that brings us to the end of our study session, unless there's anything else on the agenda. Thanks, everyone, for sticking with us, and we will see you all Monday night at 6:00.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.